Okay, we're on. Okay, I guess we'll start. Good evening, everybody. My name is John Yater, and I will preside over tonight's commission's deliberations. Of course, the Planning and Zoning Commission is in advisory capacity to the town council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. First of all, I'll just go ahead and I will read the hearing application into record, and then, of course, we'll identify it, and then the staff will make their presentation, at which time the commission staff will direct the commission, we'll work through that, and then we'll have questions from the floor. Please, if you have any questions, go through the chair, which tonight is me, and then we'll go ahead and vote on that and see what, see if we're going to approve it or not approve it. And with that, I'm just going to go ahead and call the meeting of the March 9th Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Okay. I guess the first thing we'll do is we'll have invocations. Gary, would you like to introduce?
Yes, Pastor Don Dijma. I hope I got that right. Probably not, but I tried.
Please stand, and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Love and heavenly Father, You have set before us life and death, blessings and curses. Life and blessings come from a life of obedience to You, to Your laws, to Your prescribed ways of living life. Death and curses come from not listening to You and avoiding You. And, Father, I commend this Planning and Zoning Commission for wanting to first acknowledge You in their order of business, because with that, Lord, we also know that blessings will come their way, that the wisdom that they need for making the notifications to the town council will be rendered with Your wisdom and not just theirs. As we acknowledge You, Father, in all of our ways, direct our paths, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, thank you. Okay, our next agenda item will be roll call.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Present.
Commissioner Rankin?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Reeves?
Here.
Commissioner Zercher?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Yater?
Here.
And Chairperson Dusky?
Absent.
And I hope he's going to be okay.
Yes.
He had an accident, I believe, today. Thank you for that info, Richard. Next action item is approval of the minutes from December 8th, 2014. Does anybody have any questions about those minutes? Move for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all, by, just say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All approved?
Aye.
Get that out. Okay, any announcements? Any announcements from the town? Commission? Let's go on to our first public hearing item. That would be GPA 15-001. On the application of Robert W. Jones, a request to the town of Prescott Valley for a general plan amendment from medium-high-density residential to community commercial on the remaining portion of Lot 4243, public, I'm sorry, Prescott Valley, Unit 14, located at the southeast intersection of Florentine Road and Grizzly Bear Drive. Joe?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Along with this, the applicant has requested zoning map change, R2 to C2, and we'll be discussing this at the same time, and then we'll ask for a separate motion on that should the general plan amendment be approved. In about 1993, the owner and applicant began as the auto repair business on combined lots 2277, 2278, in Prescott Valley, Unit 7. And this was, the zoning has been C2 since the time of incorporation of the town. It was actually assigned to C2 when it was in the Upai County before incorporation. The general plan designation of community commercial was first adopted with the ratification of the general plan 2020, which was subsequently included with the general plan update 2025. The general plan at the time in 2020, those general plan designations were intended to coincide with the zoning that existed, with the underlying C2 zoning. In 1998, the owner and applicant acquired the adjacent lot 2266 in Unit 7, which had the same zoning and land use to use for parking of equipment and trucks for his rental business. Later, he acquired the Lot 4243 to the north. This lot was in Unit 14, was designated R2, and the applicant apparently was not aware of the zoning, and figured it was assumed to be a commercial. In 2006, Florentine Road was extended to the east into the Big Sky Business Park, and Unit 7, Lot 4242, that was zoned R2, was acquired by the town for the Florentine Road extension, and the town also acquired a small corner of the subject Lot 4243 to provide for site visibility. So this, the small section of Florentine Road that terminated at Valley Road then needed to be renamed since Florentine was extending to the east, and the name Grizzly Bear Drive was used. Upon inspections by the town, routine inspections, it was determined that the use of this residential lot would not allow for the rental truck parking, and there was a zoning violation, and the owner was asked to pursue rezoning the property to bring it into conformance. So in order to approve a C2 zoning, land use must first be changed to community commercial, and commission can make a recommendation, separate actions of both of these, for the town council. There was a neighborhood meeting held at the property site on February 2016. There was one person representing budget mini-storage that tended to ask to clarify the purpose of the rezoning, but had no objections. So the proposed general plan amendment and resulting land use is consistent with the surrounding commercial properties, and staff supports the proposed general plan amendment and asks commission to make a motion to approve GPA 15-001. I'm available for any questions. I know the applicant is here, he's not feeling well, so if he didn't have to come up, it's fine, but we're available.
Joe? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Hope you get better. Any questions from the commission?
Joe, can I ask a question? When the town bought 4242, the property that's actually now on the north side of Florentine, is there a plan? I mean, right now, it's kind of a triangle running through the middle of it. Is there a plan for that property, or?
Up here, you're talking about?
On the, on the north side of Florentine Road?
Space here.
I don't think you can see it.
Just this one portion, up here?
Yes.
Is that, no, I know nothing. It's just the plan for that. It's just the way that, there was a, actually, a piece of that, it was a larger lot here, so when they, when they bought it, they, a portion, this portion here was left to make the property here, provide access to the existing multifamily unit that was there.
So is it pretty much just going to stay the way it is?
Yeah, it's been, it's kind of town's policy, just to take by deed that property for roadways, so it hasn't really been dedicated on a plat or anything, so I don't know of anything at this point that's planned.
My only question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, any comments from the public on this item? Okay, hearing none, no other questions here. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we forward a recommendation of approval of GPA 15-001 to council for approval.
I'll second. May I have a motion and a second?
Set that out.
Get it out. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Zercher?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
And Vice Chairperson Yater?
Yes. We'll go on to council, thank you. Our next public hearing item is ZMC 15-002. Upon the application of Robert W. Jones, a request to the town of Prescott Valley for zoning map change from R2-3 to C2 on remaining portion of Lot 4243, Prescott Valley, Unit 14, located at the southeast intersection of Florentine Road and Grizzly Bear Drive. Again, Joe?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I'd appreciate the provided background on the general plan, the rezoning. General plan was approved, so the request to C zoning is consistent with the recommended approval of the general plan 2025 amendment, and staff supports zoning map change and asks commission to make a motion to forward ZMC 1501 to the council with a recommendation of approval, subject to the recommended conditions.
Okay, any questions on this item? No? Any public conversations? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ZMC 15-002 and pass it on to approval for, with the council.
Okay. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Zercher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Yater?
Yes. Pass that on to council, thank you. Next item, ZMC 15-001. On the initiation of Planning and Zoning Commission, a request to consider a zoning map change from RCU-70 to M1-PAD, where approximately 58 acres located along Highway 69 east of the current town limits and south of Big Sky Industrial Park. Carmen?
Good evening, commissioners. Yes, this evening, I would like the commission to consider this zoning map change. This request is in conjunction with the recent annexation of this property, which pertains to the extension of Enterprise Parkway from the Big Sky Industrial Park to State Route 69. This zoning map change will encourage industrial development in the area, and therefore, the appropriate zoning for this request would be M1PAD. The public hearing for annexation was held by the town council, and the annexation ordinance was approved in January, therefore, the time is right now to look at rezoning the property. Portions of the Big Sky Industrial Park adjacent to the area are zoned M1PAD, and the M1PAD zoning district is the only one that allows sexually-oriented businesses. Therefore, the owner of the subject property is asked that the property be rezoned appropriately with compatible zoning, which encourages development of the appropriate uses while eliminating uses which are unsuitable for a visible gateway. Therefore, the town staff is going to ask that a condition be placed on this rezoning to prohibit the sexual-oriented businesses in that zoning area. Additionally, the town will be paying for initial costs involved with the turn lane improvement from Enterprise Parkway onto Academic Way, and therefore, staff will also recommend that a stipulation be added to include participation from the applicant for turn lane improvements commensurate with the traffic generated for future development. This is something that wasn't included in your packet, but staff has come up with this recommendation in the meantime. So that proportion is to be determined by future traffic studies and approved by the town engineer. So therefore, staff believes that the M1PAD zoning is appropriate for this area. The proposed area is located in the growth and development tier two of the Prescott Valley general plan 2025, and the use for industrial development is compatible with the surrounding areas. Staff recommends a motion to be made to forward a recommendation of approval of zoning map change 15-001 with the following conditions: that uses under subsection 1317020A12 sexually-oriented businesses be prohibited in the subject area, and condition two, that participation by the applicant in turn lane improvements, the proportion of which is to be determined by future traffic studies and approved by the traffic engineer. Any questions?
Any questions from staff?
My question would be that, on this future turn lanes, are you talking on the Parkway itself, or are you talking on Highway 69?
Yes, they would be on Enterprise Parkway, and it would be leading to an area which is privately owned, so therefore, participation by the developer or the development of that area, we would require some reimbursement for those improvements at that time.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, yes, just the restrictions that you're talking about, they're not printed here, will be in, we make a motion, that will be in there, correct?
Excuse me?
The restrictions? We will do that. We'll make sure those conditions are in the motion. Yes. Okay. Any other questions? The audience? Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion with the two conditions that Carmen suggested there. Can I hear a motion?
Yes, I'd like to see approval of ZMC 15-001, and with all the restrictions that we spoke about in this motion, also approval of the council.
Would we call those restrictions or conditions? Which, what, conditions? Is that, yeah, conditions, we'll call it conditions, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Zercher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Yater?
Yes, with that, we'll send that on. Okay, we're going to go into our action items segment. The first action item is RP 15-001, upon the application of Universal Homes Incorporated, a request for revisionary plat to adjust the interior lots of Lot 1609 through 1614 of Granville, Unit 7A1, 7B1, and 7C1, located at the southwest intersection of Granville Parkway and Dryden Street. Joe?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. This first phase unit, 7A1, 7B1, and 7C1, was approved in January, June of 2014, for 71 lots. At the time, recently, they started constructing those lots, they were using a map, had some faulty lot lines, were in the wrong place, so when they placed them, they would have resulted in some setbacks, encroachments, some side yard encroachments being nonconforming, so they have asked to prepare this revisionary plat to make sure that the units that are being built would be placed properly on those lots, and staff supports this to correct that problem. The lots are conforming with the R1L PAD district. Staff recommends approval of RP 15001, and that be forwarded to council with a recommendation of approval. The developer's not here, but the, from line engineering, the surveyor is here, should he have any other questions about the plat itself or setbacks.
Okay, do we have any questions from the?
Of course you do. Yes, I do. Of course you do. When we're, when we're, when you're asking the commission to allow the lot lines to change like this, obviously, you're going to have some as-built situations, because you've got utilities in the wrong spot, water boxes that aren't on lots, and so forth. Is that something that is just corrected as an as-built when the final approval for that particular home, that particular lot gets done, or is that something that, there should be some sort of a plan that we look at as a commission?
My first, I guess I would think that all those utilities should be in the, in the front, it shouldn't be affected by just adjusting the side yard setbacks, so I don't think there should be any change of that, but the inspectors would make sure that it matches the plat plan, site plan matches the plat, and everything's in the right location.
Okay, my second concern, then, has to do with the, I guess, which is the north side, or the east side of Lot 1609, where the new, the new lot line is halfway into the public utility easement, is, my understanding, the normal with Granville is that they are going to have basically a block wall that is going to be on the property line or adjacent to the property line, that's their normal, that they would do, and in going out there, although, I was kind of disappointed, the pins on the east side of Lot 1609 had not been placed, but it looks as though that wall would be sitting on top of a natural gas line. I don't think that that's something that would be allowed, would it?
No, we wouldn't allow to have walls in the easement, so it would have to be set inside of the easement. We won't allow the placement on the.
Okay, so even though the lot lines in the middle of that easement, the wall would not be?
Right, can't have any walls within those easements, so they'd have to.
Okay, and I didn't know if that was something that, that the commission needed to be involved with, or if the, if your department just took that and made sure that it was done properly.
That would be covered through the zoning review and approval of the site plan.
Okay. That was my question.
Yep.
Any, any further questions? We would entertain conversation with you, if you'd like to come up, if you have anything to add. Are you good? You're good? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve RP 015-001, and send it on to council.
Second, please.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Commissioner Zercher?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
And Vice Chairperson Yater?
Yes, we'll go ahead and send that on. We'll go on to our next action item, and that is election of officer, and yes, thank you, Richard. We're going to need your support up here for this one.
There comes a time every year that this commission elects officers. You most recently considered this matter last time you met, you elected to defer action on that, awaiting return of Chairman Dusky. We've set this for your consideration, it's purely your prerogative, if you want to move forward to elect officers this evening. You once deferred that action. Should you elect to move forward, I will assist you in that regard, in assisting you in taking nominations from the commission and handling those nominations through a formal vote process. If you elect to defer, we could defer it to the next agenda and cause it to reappear at that time. In lieu, based on your bylaws, in lieu of the chair, the vice chair operates and conducts all meeting functions. I have seen an instance where this commission, the chair and vice chair were both absent, and we had to go through a process by which we elected an interim chair to conduct business. So it's really up to you how you want to conduct business into the future. I know that Mr. Dusky has expressed to me a desire to sit again as the chairman of this commission, and I stand ready to assist you in respect to your direction.
We had a discussion.
Is there a timeframe that we're, we're supposed to have calendar year that we're starting with?
Yeah, January 1st was when you were supposed to have elected the chair. It's calendar to calendar year. On that basis, your last agenda was in December, and we placed it at that time for your consideration.
In past, with past commissions, has it been, I know oftentimes, even with the council, with the vice mayor, it's almost on a rotation basis to give fresh people an opportunity to be involved. Is that something that the Planning and Zoning Commissions have done also?
I've not seen a formal process like the council uses to rotate in new folks, but yes, you're right, the council does have a policy, albeit unspoken, excuse me, unwritten policy, that talks about moving new blood into leadership positions, but I, that has not been something that has been historically the case with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Being the newbie, I don't know how many terms our present chairman has served.
At least two, maybe three.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can we ever consider doing the rotation system, or the, can we somehow look at that, maybe, to do that, to do like the council's doing?
We do, we do elect every year, right?
Well, you, you will elect every year, but.
I think the term can be longer, you know?
Well, we've had some turnover on this commission, so that wouldn't have worked all that well. In the case of the council, those people are there for four years.
That's true.
But I would hope that you guys are here for at least another 10, to serve my purposes only. But that could be something that could be unwritten, but contemplated as part of your election process. I don't mean to throw the heavy at you guys, but it's up to you. I'd just like to see the term longer for a chairperson, to be honest, the one year seems short to me, but there must be a reason why.
Pardon me?
I said, I'd like to see the term like two years instead of one year, but I just, I guess we have to discuss that and see.
Well, we can, I mean, we do have bylaws.
You would have to direct me to amend your bylaws, and that would be something, if you choose to do that, then I would ask for you to direct me to do so, and I'll come back and schedule a meeting for that discussion. The amendment of bylaws is not on your agenda this evening.
So if we, if we were to decide to, that we wanted to vote or nominate this evening, do we have to have like a roll call of what our preference would be, or?
I would start by determining whether or not you want to move forward to take nominations for first the chair, and subsequent to that, the vice chair, that would be your first action. If you elect to take nominations this evening, you, I'll direct that activity, if there are more than one nomination, we typically go to a paper ballot. If there's only one nomination, then it's a fait accompli, and there's really nothing other than a voice vote necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put my two cents into this. Pretty much all the other boards and commissions I serve on, it's a one-year term, but it can be at the board, you know, board or commission's discretion to then, you know, reelect that person as chair for another term. I don't think it's necessary to put that in our bylaws, that it's a two-year term. I think we should just stick with the one-year term, and then every, you know, at the last meeting of the year, have an annual election of officers, and then if need be, reelect, you know, reelect you.
I agree. That's pretty good, too.
So that way, we don't have to change our bylaws.
Okay, maybe if I can help you, because Rick's not here doesn't necessarily mean you can't vote for Rick. Basically, if that's your direction. In terms of the activity of this commission, it's important you have all your officers there, the chair and vice chair, and John, I think, has done a good job, but it's not for me to say.
Don't butter him up.
It's for you guys to determine what you want to do. So again, your first order of business is, do you want to have your elections today? is do you want to have your elections today? If so, I will assist you, but that's the first thing you need to decide.
We need to move forward? I think we need to move forward.
Okay, so John, excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm looking for you to formalize a motion from the commission to hold your elections this evening.
I just need to know how all this is going to work. Motion to, for elections tonight? All agree?
Correct?
Yeah. Okay, can you hear a motion from that point on?
So moved.
Second. Okay, you good?
You need to call the question. I heard a first, a second. You need to call the question. All those in favor?
All of us in favor. Hi?
Hi.
Okay, good.
Okay. With that then in mind, your first order of business would be to entertain nominations for chairman. Any nomination can be made from the deas. If there are multiple nominations, after all nominations are closed, we will at that time go to a paper ballot and you will signify your vote on a piece of paper. If there are not multiple nominations, then you can move forward with a voice vote. So, Mr. Chairman, you should open the floor for nominations for chair.
Is there any nominations for the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to make a nomination of Rick Duskey because he has really handled the meetings well. Unfortunately, he's been ill, but I think the board's going to have to, our board have to decide that. So I'm going to put his name in the hat.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
There need not be a second, but with that in mind, you've got one nomination. You'll ask if there are any other nominations.
Well, I'd like to nominate John Yater to be chair because we really don't know if Rick is coming back. I know it's his expressed desire, but I think we need to move forward and if he doesn't show up at the next meeting, we're kind of in a limbo and we're going to have to do this all over again.
So you now have two nominations for chair. Your business, is there a third nomination?
Any other nominations?
Hearing none, you would close the floor.
Okay, okay. Now I close, correct?
Okay, close the floor to nominations.
Okay, close order for nominations?
Okay, so you have two nominations, that is for Rick Duskey as chair and John Yater as chair. Based on the fact that you have two nominations, I would suggest that we do this now by paper ballot. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
This is being rather gutsy, but I would like to express or share with you that I have very strong opinions about this. I recently refused a third term at a job that I know I do well, that I was, there was an attempt to draft me for a third term and I said, I do not think it's good for an organization to have the same leadership more than two years in a row. And that's just my personal feeling.
And I believe Richard's point was in that we have elections every year.
Correct. For the purpose of.
I understand your point.
Your vote, you can only signify your support of one candidate. You can't do both. Otherwise it'll nullify your vote. So you should write those down and once you've written them down, I'll collect them.
I have to let you know this is my first rodeo. Can you tell? With this, this is my first rodeo.
I'll have that in situations.
So based on tallying your written votes, Mr. Yater, you're now the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that then in mind, the next order of business would be to elect a vice chair and you would follow the same process. You would open the floor for nominations. There may be more than one nomination. If there are more than one nomination, we'll ask that we do this by paper ballot. There could be multiples greater than two. Everybody could nominate everybody and we could have a free-for-all. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, you would entertain nominations for vice chair.
First of all, I want to thank you for your support, those who voted for me. Anyway, I would open the, for nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Cheryl Drives.
Drives? Did I pronounce that right? Good, very good.
Is there any other? Vice chair, any other nominations?
Like to nominate Matt Zutcher, please.
Any other nominations? And I, we're going to have to have a paper vote?
Right, hold on. Well, hold on, you're going to say any other nomination?
Oh, any other nominations?
Hearing none, you close the nomination.
Hearing none, and we're going to close for nominations, okay.
See, come on. I told you this was my. Oh, dude. Yes. Nick and Ruth. Quite small. I was going to do something, but I won't.
Happy face.
Looks like Sherri's the vice chair.
Oh, all right, Sherri.
Okay, as a reminder, Vicki acts as secretary. You can't elect her because she works with me. So you have concluded your business relative to officers for this year. Reminder, those terms are only good until the beginning of next year, January 1st. So we will return to the subject the end of the calendar year in December or if you don't have a meeting in December,